Thank you. As we wait for everyone to join our meeting here for Seneca Valley, as everyone's coming online, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Seneca Valley School Board meeting. This is our action meeting. Just give us a couple more seconds and we'll get started here. So try to adjust that. All right. At this time, I'm going to draw up my camera. Yeah, I'm going to try to. Sorry about that, folks. My camera keeps falling. We're going to try to start our meeting here. So as we start all meetings, we like to gavel in. We have a special helper here tonight by the name of Nate Young. So Nate, if I could call you up here to help me gavel the meeting in. Okay. This is it. This is a big three taps of the gavel. Real good. Excellent work. Thank you very much. With that tap of the gavel, I'd like to call to order the Seneca Valley School District School Board Action Meeting of February 8th, 2021. And at this time, I'd like you all to join me in a moment of silence in the memory of the lives lost due to COVID-19 and in reflection of those who are mourning loved ones or recovering from the illness or have negatively been impacted during this time. Thank you very much. And at this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Andracy and the introduction of I Led the Pledge.
Thank you, Mr. President. You met just a few moments ago, our I Led the Pledge student. Let's welcome him again to the microphone, Nate Young. He is a second grader at Rowan Elementary School. So before we say the pledge, Nate, you can stand right at the microphone. Perfect. So Nate, Nate is here tonight with his parents, Robert and Irene Young of Cranberry Township. He was nominated this evening by Rowan Elementary Principal Nan Farmer. And I'd like to welcome and thank Ms. Farmer for being here tonight in support of Nate. Also, part of Nate's fan club includes his teacher Gabriella De Simone and paraprofessional Mandy Squire. And I'd like to thank both of you for being here tonight in support of Nate as well. Nate shares that his favorite subjects are history, science, and the arts. He wants to be a teacher, but if not that, maybe, just maybe, President of the United States. His interest in our U.S. Presidents led him to read, learn, and even memorize quite a bit about presidential history. In fact, he's agreed to share some presidential facts with us tonight. So Nate, are there a few facts you might want to share with us that we may not know about U.S. Presidents?
Well, it's, uh, if anyone knows all their names, who does? Raise your hand if you do. There are 45 presidents. George Washington, John Adams, Thomas Jefferson, wait, I guess I just do it in song, okay? President song, Washington, Adams, Thomas Jefferson, Madison Monroe, Lindsey, Adams, Simpson, Hillary H. Harrison, Tyler, Oakton, Taylor, Fillmore, Pierce, James McCannan, Lincoln, Johnson, Louis C. S., Grant, Hazen, Garfield, Chester, Arthur, Cleveland, Emerson, Cleveland, McKinley, Roosevelt, Willie H. Ta, Wilson, Harding, Calvin College, Hoover, Roosevelt, Harry H. Truman, Eisenhower, Kennedy, Johnson, Nixon, Ford, Jim McCalla, Reagan, Bush, Clinton, Bush again, Barack Obama, Nixon is the president. Who will be the next one?
That was fantastic.
I have to interject. That might be the best thing that I've ever seen at a Seneca Valley School Board meeting ever.
That was terrific. Great job. So Nate's going to make some history of his own tonight by being one of the select few students who say the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you are able to stand and join us here and at home, we invite you to do so as we say the Pledge of Allegiance. And Nate, whenever you're ready to say it, go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Put your hands down right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Earlier this evening, we took some pictures. He also received his medal and his I Led the Pledge t-shirt along with some Seneca swag. So we'd like to thank Nate and his family and of course, our teachers and Ms. Farmer for being here this evening. Thank you again.
I will say, I agree with Mr. Nickel. That is the greatest thing I've ever seen. And I can tell you, you can't tell what all these masks are, but every one of us is smiling up here. You've made our day. Thank you, Nate. So at this point, we'll move on our meeting and ask for the roll call. And Lisa, I'm assuming you're online?
Yes.
Okay, there you are.
Yes. Ms. Bradel.
Here.
Mr. DiTullio.
Here.
Ms. Harrison.
Here.
Mr. Hester.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Nickel.
Yes, here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Ms. Whittle.
Here.
And Mr. Widowson.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to information reports. I'll ask Ms. Andracy back up to the podium.
Thank you again, Mr. President. We have two items of recognition this evening. The Pennsylvania Music Education Association recently recognized nearly 50 Seneca Valley students as district and regional finalists in this year's PMEA festival competitions. During this time of the school year, PMEA holds both district and regional level festivals as stepping stones to the All-State Festival and Conference. PMEA is planning a full multi-day online experience for Allstate students that will culminate with a professionally-produced virtual performance by each Allstate ensemble. Students were recognized in band, choir, and orchestra, and that information is in your backup. Our second item, Seneca Valley senior high school students in the gifted program were named winners in a virtual mock trial competition recently hosted by Penn State University. SV's two teams placed second and third out of 14 teams from across the state, and senior Ella Palogruto received best attorney overall out of 150 students who participated. The two-day tournament enabled students to present a civil case based on a wrongful death lawsuit. Over the course of the competition, students participated in four separate trials, and again, more information can be found in your backup. Additionally, under dates to remember, just a reminder, February is National Black History Month. February 12th, which is this Friday, is a vacation day. There's no school for students or no remote instruction for students. And February 15th is President's Day, and that's all I have unless you have questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Andracy. Are there any questions for Ms. Andracy? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to legislative reports, and I'm actually going to take this one. And I'd ask that we typically do these legislative reports during our work sessions, which is be the previous week from the action, but because the governor's budget came out last week, I asked that be postponed till this week. So with that, the governor did present his budget last week, so we're going to talk a little bit about what was in there, and I guess I'll break it down to the good, the bad, and the ugly. So the good is the education budget is a 21.6% increase over last year with a total of $8.13 billion for the basic education subsidy. All the funds would be run through the basic education funding formula, and that would net Seneca Valley approximately additional $314,000 if passed the way it is. The budget also included an increase of $200 million for special education. And Plan Con, which is a program that reimburses school districts for construction projects, and it's been on hold for over five years, would come out of the moratorium it's been on and would receive funding of $200 million. Also, transportation funding was increased 622 million, or was increased to $622.4 million, a 2.75% increase. The school employees' retirement piers, the budget provides for an additional $32 million to make it approximately $2.73 billion to cover the state share of the pension costs. Additionally, the governor is estimating that school districts would receive $229 million coming from projected savings gained from proposed charter school funding reforms. I know that's one of the things that we've been pushing for a lot. The way that they would accomplish those savings was applying the four-tiered special education formula applied to school district funding to all charter schools. That's estimated to save $99 million annually and establishing a statewide cyber charter tuition rate of $9,500 per student per year, which would save school districts another estimated $130 million. So that was the good. The bad is the funding for the career and technical education programs would remain stagnant at $99 million, and the funding for the career and technical education equipment grants would remain level at $5.5 million. And teacher professional development, the funding for that would remain flat at $5 million. And now, what I'll call the ugly. So the governor's proposed budget contains the largest tax increase in Pennsylvania history, raising the income tax rate to 46%. And both chambers of the legislature, as you all know, are controlled by the Republicans, and both the House and Senate majorities have publicly opposed the budget, with the Senate Republican leaders calling Governor Wolf's budget proposal dead on arrival in the Senate. The Senate Appropriations Committee Chair Pat Brown said the governor could not have picked a worse time to propose a 46.3% increase in the personal income tax, given the struggles Pennsylvanians continue to face during the worst pandemic of our lifetime. So it sounds like the budget was put out with the greatest intentions, but as we've seen in the past, it most likely won't go anywhere. So where this will end up is anyone's guess. The general thinking is it'll be a flat or moderate increase, but we won't see any of these large increases. A lot of people have just fluffed it off because it is so widely, you know, both ends of the spectrum as far as what's being proposed and what would be accepted. But I think it's important that folks see, you know, what's going on in the world of Harrisburg, how the funding works, and how that's going to affect us down the line, you know? So just wanted to bring that out. I didn't know if there was any other questions or comments for any of the board members or anything else that someone read that I might have missed that they thought was important to add. Looking around and seeing none, then thank you, and I'll update you next month on whatever else legislatively comes out. So moving on in our agenda, in your financial reports, and there's backup for all these items, you will find operations, senior high activities, intermediate high activities, middle school activities, athletics, food services, tax collection reports, and capital project funds. We'll move on, and unless there's any questions on those items, we'll move on to the COVID-19 update. Dr. Vitale.
Thank you. And this report is data as of this past Friday. Butler County's PCR positivity rate from the most recent seven days, as posted on the Pennsylvania Department of Health early warning dashboard, school superintendents, school leaders pay close attention to that dashboard. So for the most recent seven days, January 29th through February 4th, our PCR positivity rate was down to 7.4%. That is good news. It is down from the week prior of 8.6%. As you know, this is one of several thresholds that we need to meet in this county to move to moderate. We need to be at 10% or lower on the PCR positivity rate. We were, and we have met that threshold for not just one week, but two weeks in a row. However, that is not the only data point that the Pennsylvania Department of Health considers. They also consider the incidence rate. The most recent seven-day report for that, January 29th through February 4th, is per 100,000 residents, 117.1. Again, good news, down from the previous week of 138.9. We were 17 cases short of meeting this threshold, and so we do anticipate and hope that this Friday, when they update the early warning dashboard, that we would go to moderate. But at this point, we are still insubstantial as a county because we need to meet both of those thresholds. The Butler County daily COVID rate, we track that internally, and this is public information that anyone can track. We have been keeping that each week in my office. Ms. Lynn, that's on the call, she mines that data every day. Today, the dashboard was down, and we received a notice from the Pennsylvania Department of Health that they were having some technical difficulties. But we did look at it this morning as well as last Friday. As of last Friday, the 14-day rolling average was 64.6 on Friday, so that would be for Butler County, and that's the lowest 14-day rolling average we have seen since November 11th, so that too is good news. However, that data is not considered by the Pennsylvania Department of Health in order to move us to moderate. We also track zip codes. So as of Friday, and every week we're looking at this, as a matter of fact, every day, Lisa is going in for us and mining the zip code data across all of the zip codes in our school district, and that so far has been really good news as well. There were only 12 cases reported last Thursday in all of our zip codes, across seven zip codes, and we track those on Friday. And again, we would be looking tomorrow when the public data is available again. So the numbers are going in the right direction and continue to do so. We are not at a point where we can recommend secondary students, grades seventh through 12th, come back four or five days a week yet. We need to see those numbers be in moderate and continue to be in moderate. We are also monitoring any get-togethers that would have occurred over the Super Bowl. Although our beloved Steelers weren't in the Super Bowl, we do have to watch and pay attention to any impact that could have had with even small get-togethers. So we would be watching those numbers over the next week or so as well. And again, just as a reminder, when someone asks, well, why did elementary come back and not secondary yet? We know that from the CDC, from the Pennsylvania Department of Health, and all of the research sources that we follow, that ages 10 and under are not transmitting at the same level that the teenagers are ages 12 and up. So we're paying close attention to those transmission rates as well. The Seneca Valley dashboard has been updated, continues to be updated. Now Nurse Williams has taken over that project, and we are thankful. That was quite a bit of work for me, Dr. McKinley, and Dr. McCarty, so I am grateful for her help. So Nurse Williams updates that daily for us now, and we will continue to pay attention to those numbers for temporary closures. We hope that by proceeding with caution and coming back in a phased approach, as you know, elementary returned today for four days a week. And every Friday, when we go to remote in the district, we will be able to reset our dashboard, reset our numbers, do contact tracing, hopefully break up transmission. But if anyone heard Dr. Fauci yesterday on Meet the Press, he was the first to talk about, again, what we've heard over and over, that schools must watch their community numbers. And by all means, we are working hard to get everyone who qualifies in the 65 and over category vaccinated, and Nurse Williams and all of our nurses are doing a great job trying to help folks coordinate that. We are now up to 56 employees that have either been vaccinated or have an appointment this week to get their first vaccination, so we are pleased with that. So at this point, we will keep the board updated, we will keep our staff updated, we will continue to follow the numbers, and hope that we continue to go in the right direction so that we could move to another phase of opening up. But at this point, we cannot do that, but we're very pleased with four days for elementary. I was in one of our elementary buildings today and did, the teachers were just doing a fabulous job, all of the staff, with social distancing, with lunches, with all of the things that have yet been changed on them again. They have adapted quickly, and I am thankful for the team effort here at Seneca Valley, and I'm very pleased with what I saw today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any comments or questions for Dr. Vitale? Not seeing any. The only comment that I'd like to make is to address, you know, there's always the rumor mill that's going on, and we've gotten some communications from folks on different things. And I guess, pardon me on that, what I'd like to say about it is, basically, if you don't hear it from Dr. Vitale, from our website, from Linda Andracy and the Communication Department or from someone here on the board, then that is just that, it's a rumor, whether it's, you know, going back five days a week, whether it's something concerning, you know, graduation or prom or any of those other things. We are hopeful that things can change and get more back to normal, but at this point, there isn't any definitive plans for anything. We are always reviewing information, as Dr. Vitale said, making sure we're doing what's best. So if you don't hear it from us, it's not true, you know, to please, you know, don't spread rumors. That doesn't help anything. It just causes us more headaches when people get upset about things that end up not being true and we can't find out, you know, where the rumors started. So it's that time, I know everyone's getting anxious, you know, because we've been cooped up for a year now. So, you know, we understand that, but, you know, just try to be more considerate about spreading information if you can't actually say, you know, it came from this school itself. So with that, we'll move on, and I'll look for public comment, but there is no one that has signed up for public comments. So we'll move on then to looking for a motion to approve the minutes of our work session of January 11th, 2021, and our regular meeting of January 19th, 2021. Those were included in your backup. The Treasurers Report is providing your backup, the General Fund Bills, and the grand total amount of $2,208,514 is providing your backup, and finally, the Construction Fund Bills in a total of $2,430,874.90 also is providing your backup. Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. Lisa, if you call the roll, please.
Ms. Whittle.
Yes.
Mr. Nickel.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Bradel.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Hester.
Yes.
Mr. Widowson. Mr. DiTullio.
Yes.
Motion carries with eight in the affirmative and one absent.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to administrative action. Mr. Nickel.
Certainly, Mr. President. Under administration action, I'd like to make the following motion with regards to board policies. They are all detailed and provided in your backup. The first is for Policy 212, reporting student progress revised, second and final reading. Policy 217, graduation requirements revised, second and final reading. Policy 218.4, discipline of student convicted adjudicated of sexual assault revised, second and final reading. Policy 247, hazing revised, first reading. Policy 249, anti-bullying revised, first reading. Policy 426, complaint process revised, first reading. And Policy 824, maintaining professional adult student boundaries revised, first reading.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Nickel. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any discussion? Mr. Peterson.
Mr. President, and a couple of the policies under consideration tonight, there are references to the Title IX, I wrote this down, I forgot to bring my notes, so help me with the proper wording. The Title IX Coordinator and the, I'm just lost for the word, the Compliance Coordinator. I'm trying to, I'm sorry if I don't have that quite right. Is that Ms. Baubac? Do I remember that? And is that both titles for one person, or is it two separate titles? Maybe I'm splitting a hair too thin there. They're both Ms. Baubac.
One is Ms. Baubac. I would need to look through the policy one more time to make sure they both are her. Ms. Baubac, are you online?
Yes, I am. And the question is, I am the Title IX Coordinator, and was your question, do I wear both hats? That was the question?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Good for you. So a follow-up question would be, or bad for you maybe, my follow-up question would be, how does a frightened incoming freshman who has a problem get into that system? And I assume the answer to that would be that, hopefully, they talk to their teacher or counselor. So then, are the teachers broadly aware that Ms. Baubac is their best resource and would know how to go, how to follow up on a student issue?
So that is, my information is noted on the website. This information is also to be shared in student handbooks, et cetera. So that would be presented in that fashion. I believe your question was, how would they be aware that I am the point person?
I'm just concerned that, you know, some scared little kiddo, just coming in, little kiddo, young person coming into high school with a problem, doesn't get put off by a complex system. So the crux of my question is, if a child reports to a teacher a concern, do all the teachers, are they all oriented to this process and know to turn to you, Ms. Baubac, to get the technical resources they need?
Yeah, that is the part, since the regs were changed in August, that has been part of the process. We participated in a training with administrators. So that is something that's going to be reviewed annually with the teachers, so they are aware of. If something's reported, they go directly to their principal, and the principals have been thoroughly trained on how to proceed moving forward, should it involve a Title IX scenario.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
I would also add, Mr. Peterson, that Mr. Hoffman's firm trained everyone on the leadership team. There are about 45 of us, so it's not just principals, it's central office directors, it's assistant directors. His firm also did a great job of having scenario-based training. So first, showing us the policy, talking about the procedures, and then talking about, in this scenario, what you do. What about this scenario? So sometimes you get the training and it's not practical, but this was, so I want to thank Mr. Hoffman and his firm. But also, the new policies are always updated on our website. This is a complex process, but I do know that our school counselors are always, you know, boots on the ground. We, if they need additional training, we'll make sure we get that for them, but I know the principals are equipped to walk them through this process as well.
Great. Good to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. Lisa, if you call the roll, please.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Bradel.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Nickel.
Yes.
Mr. Hester.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Ms. Whittle.
Yes.
Mr. Widowson. Mr. DiTullio.
Yes.
And can I clarify, did I hear Mr. Peterson?
My vote was yes.
Very good. Thank you. Motion carries with eight in the affirmative and one absent.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to instruction action, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Harrison, please.
Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following instruction action items. First would be conferences. Approved conference request is provided in the backup. Second is Brain Injury Association of Pennsylvania Employee Leasing Agreement. Approved the agreement with Brain Injury Association of Pennsylvania to lease the services of Seneca Valley speech therapist Maggie Lachavich for the term of January 4th, 2021 through June 30th, 2021, is provided in the backup. Third item is Sign Language Interpreting Professionals LLC Client Agreement. Approved the agreement with Sign Language Interpreting Professionals LLC to provide interpreting services for deaf and/or hard-of-hearing students is provided in the backup. And the last item is BC3 College Within the High School CWHS Partnership Agreement. Approved the college within high school CWHS partnership agreement between the Seneca Valley School District and Butler County Community College from July 1st, 2020 through June 30th of 2021 is provided in the backup.
Thank you for the motion, Ms. Harrison. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Any questions or comments from the board? I'd just like to make the comment that the college within the high school, it's a great program that we offer the kids and the parents, you know, it does, you know, reduce college costs by being able to take some of these classes while they're in high school and, you know, quote-unquote, kill two birds with one stone.